Mayor Badalows?
Here. And now we'll have the salute to the flag led by Mayor Pro Tem Martin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Denise Pizano, City Attorney's Office. There is no reportable action tonight.
Thank you. Our next item... Oh. Oh, I thought the Assistant City Manager had something to say.
No, I didn't. Sorry.
Our next item is a proclamation for Van Dominic Ocampo. And I'm going to, if you'd like to step forward, I will read this long exhaustive information about Van. Congratulations and best wishes to Van Dominic Watt Ocampo. Whereas Van Dominic has retired from a distinguished public service career with the City of Pacifica having served most recently as Director of Public Works in charge of engineering, field service, and wastewater. And whereas Van Dominic started his 28 and a half year career of public service with the City of Pacifica as an engineering technician on June 30, 1990, and was promoted eight times to Senior Engineering Technician in August 1995, Assistant Civil Engineer in November 1995, Associate Civil Engineer in February of 1998, Senior Civil Engineer in September 1999, Engineering Manager in September 2001, City Engineer in March 2006, Deputy Director of Public Works, City Engineer in July of 2007, and Director of Public Works, City Engineer in 2009. And whereas Van Dominic has successfully implemented a number of capital improvement projects, most notably the construction of the Route 1 San Pedro Creek Bridge Replacement Project, the Palmetto Streetscape Project, and the Wet Weather Equalization Basin Construction Project. And whereas Van Dominic was instrumental in leading the Department of Public Works in the preparation and management of challenging natural disasters including landslides, coastal erosion, earthquakes, declared emergencies, and El Nino storms in 1998, 2010, and 2016. Whereas Van Dominic has left an enduring legacy on the City of Pacifica and on San Mateo County through his tireless efforts and commitment towards improving public infrastructure, transportation, stormwater, sanitary sewer, and the environment. And whereas Van Dominic has represented the City of Pacifica and San Mateo County's coastal region through various local and regional committees, ensuring that coastal issues are heard and that the distribution of federal, state, and local funds for the preservation, construction, and rehabilitation of public infrastructures related to local streets and roads, stormwater, and the environment are fairly achieved, thus earning him the nickname Mister Geographic Equity. And whereas Van Dominic, as a member of the City-County Engineers Association of San Mateo County, served as the Association Secretary in 2004 and as President in 2005. And whereas Van Dominic exemplified his passion for public service through his drive for excellence, earning the Employee of the Year Award and Exceptional Contribution Award for the City of Pacifica in 1993, and has continued to serve the City of Pacifica as a professional, dedicated, and loyal manner with integrity, honesty, a sense of pride in getting the job done right. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica, on behalf of all of its citizens, hereby extends our grateful thanks and appreciation to Van Dominic J. Ocampo for his 28 and a half years of dedicated and distinguished service to the City of Pacifica, and wishes him all the best in his future endeavors done this 28th day of January 2019. Pretty amazing history.
Thank you so much, Council. You know, let me tell you that 28 and a half years went by really so fast, you know. In fact, I can still vividly remember the council meeting night of August 13, 1990. That's when I was introduced and welcomed by then-Mayor Peter Loeb. It was at this very podium that I stood and the words I uttered at that time was glad to be here. It was really short. I was a young immigrant back then, you know, a young Filipino immigrant, starting a new life here in America. 28 and a half years forward, here I am, standing at the very same podium, you know, saying my goodbye as your Director of Public Works and City Engineer. I want to thank the city not just for hiring me, but for believing in me, you know, as shown or as you have read the number of promotions I was given by the city through the 28 and a half years I was here. However, I want to, I mean, I just want to say that those promotions would have not been possible nor were they meaningful if not for the support of the coworkers that I have here in the city, both past and present, especially my Public Works family. You know, their hard work and dedication is what motivates me to always do my best every time I'm, you know, I come to work. Also, with me tonight are my inspirations, the two ladies of my life, and they are my wife Carol and our daughter Danielle. You know, I want to thank them for their patience, understanding, and actually their appreciation of the depth of my responsibilities, especially during times of emergencies, as I am on call 24/7. You know, I want to thank all of my colleagues at E-Team. You know, they've been a great batch. And also to all the residents of Pacifica. I will definitely miss all of you guys. And this is Van Dominic Watt Ocampo, your Director of Public Works and City Engineer, signing off.
Thank you. Your drift.
Well, Van, your projects speak for themselves. You are leaving behind a wonderful legacy, and with all of the folks that have come up with you, we're in good hands. And I hope to see you walk in the levee someday soon, and I'm glad you get to enjoy your family. Thank you for everything you've done, and really going to miss you. I'm going to miss you personally.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Oh, good. I got the one that works. You know, hey, I mean, what can you say to the guy that was at every disaster we've had in Pacifica for 28 and a half years, you know? And I know none of them were caused by you. You had to clean up the mess, right? You know? And, you know, and Van is, you know, just a really nice guy, and I've gotten to know him personally. And he tried to con me into thinking we were related just because he had an "O" in front of his name and I had an "O" in front of mine, okay? But he didn't have the apostrophe. I did, okay? But, you know, if he does the DNA test, we'll find out if we're from the same. He's from one set of islands, I'm from another, I guess, you know? But he's an institution here in Pacifica, and he's a nice guy. He's very proud of his daughter Danielle. When we went to go look at the Equity Basin, he was pulling his picture of her out because she'd just graduated with her masters from college. And he was very, very proud, and I think in your 20, obviously she doesn't look 28, but in your 28 years, it's another great thing you've done as your daughter Danielle, I think, and you're very proud of her.
Yes, thank you.
And, I mean, I don't know what to say. I mean, he's leaving Pacifica much better than he found it. The council chambers alone, we now have better lights and we now have heat. And he did that as, it's like he's fixing a house up to sell it or something, you know? And he's doing that. So I just wished you all the best, Van. And you're a nice guy. You deserve your retirement. You've assembled a great staff that is one of the, is a legacy you've left Pacifica. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, too.
Mary Beer.
So I've watched you for many years calmly address all of the concerns and the questions from our community, and that is not an easy thing to do. So I want to thank you so much for that. I'm also glad that people have used the word legacy because I really feel that that is what you have left, and just thank you so much.
Thank you also.
Sue.
Van, I'm sorry that we didn't get to work together closely, but I too, like Mary, watched you work beautifully with the community, and it's really inspirational. And I know a number of the people in your crew, and they're fabulous. So I know you're leaving this in Louis and Sam's capable hands, and I look forward to working with them, but want to thank you very much for the legacy you've left us. Thanks.
And I thank you very much. Always a smile on your face. I just told a story about how I asked if he could do something, and I wanted a sign put up, and the very next day the sign was put up, and I went, oh my goodness, maybe I shouldn't do this anymore. Because it happened so fast, I knew that they were interrupting things that they already had in progress just to put up the sign that I asked for, and I totally appreciate it. I will miss you a lot, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for everything that you've done.
Thank you very much, Council. And I also want to thank, like I said, my Public Works family for being here tonight, support me for the last time. You know, it's always my pride and joy, my family, my Public Works family. The City of Pacifica has been my second home for the past 28 and a half years and will always be my second home. So thank you again.
Thank you. And we have a gift for you, too, and we'll come up and take a photo.
Thank you.
Always in the way. No, I'll use my leg.
No, that's not good for you.
Now, if anyone from the public would like to come forward and say anything you'd like about Van, feel free.
As long as it's nice, okay? As long as it's nice.
There's not much more to say, but I, for the numerous years, that's 16 years with Van, thank you very much, Van. I know the hard work that you've done. I know that you go to many meetings that people don't know about advocating for public transportation here as well as taking care of all of our erosion and things like that. So, and we got shuttles and we lost shuttles. We didn't lose them because of you, but we certainly got some. And I know the very hard work, and I really appreciate it. And Public Works, I had an uncle who was Public Works, and that was 24/7 and no matter what the weather. So thank you so much, and enjoy yourself.
You guys are so quiet. Okay, tiger.
Van, I've been watching you as I've been engaged here for the last half decade or so, and the like one time I mentioned something about a light, very similar to what Sue was saying, like the next day, it was fixed. And that's my experience as somebody here who's just a concerned member of the community. You care about our community, and it's been such an honor watching you taking care of our community. And you will be missed. I have no doubt you've left us in good hands, but sir, the way you have taken care of us, you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Thank you, Van.
Thank you, Van.
I move that we accept the consent calendar.
Wait, wait. Sorry, we have a public comment on item four. Would anybody else like to remove anything else from the consent calendar? No? Mike? Want to make that motion?
Well, if you have a public comment, let them speak first.
Don't you move that?
We pull it.
Oh. Move that, okay, I move that we pull item number four and that we approve the rest of the consent calendar as stated.
I'll second.
Vote, please.
Don't move her right here.
Did it work?
No.
No.
Reset.
Reset. Reset the votes. I think we're off by one.
Oh.
Should I go over here?
Oh, wait, there is one here. I found it.
Do I vote on this one then, Sarah?
Yeah, you vote on that one.
So it's like eat right, drink left, vote right.
Vote right.
Yeah.
It's hidden.
What?
It's hidden.
Yeah.
New chair, new vote.
Yeah.
Go ahead and mark your votes.
And that passes five to nothing. Now, item number four, we have a member of the audience, Chris Redfield, who would like to speak on that. Chris, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Good evening, Staff Counsel. I just wanted to address, I addressed item four two weeks ago at the last council meeting and had some questions on some budget items and how the process, the project was actually going. Director Sun and Absentite Mr. Woodhouse answered those questions adequately, and I really want to appreciate, I want to thank Public Works Engineering Staff for their hard work under pressure. This is a huge project for an on-budget completion of the EQ Basin. It's been an ongoing, excuse me, issue for many years, actually, in Lower Lindemar. So it's nice to see this come to fruition. The crespy sewer tie was completed as Deputy Director Sun stated it would be towards the end of January, so it came in on schedule. That's a big step in getting this online, getting Lindemar back to Lindemar Pump Station, getting rid of the tanks, and getting that all done. So I appreciate the notice and completion moves forward tonight, I believe, to an end of the sewage overflows in Lindemar. I think that's a huge step. And again, I want to thank, I'll take this moment since I didn't come up earlier, thank Van Ocampo for his many years of service. I've had some personal interaction with him for issues that I had related to this, exactly where I'm talking about the EQ Basin years ago. Very professional, very good staff. Unique problems that Pacifica faces with Public Works issues, I'm in the business, and we have some very unique things in addition to just the regular old stuff. So I want to appreciate everything that Van has done over the years, and I wish, I believe it's going to be Director Sun coming up, I'm assuming. So I wish everybody good luck in Public Works coming up, and we want to get that EQ Basin online as soon as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
A move that we approve consent item number four.
A second.
Vote, please. Up. Good again. And that passes five to nothing. We will move on now to oral communications. I have two cards. I have Kevin Chan and Carolyn Harmio. Is Kevin ready to speak? Yes. Please come to the mic.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to introduce Ocean Energy. So we have this new kind of marine turbine that we should test on the beach, and we have applied for permission from the Beaches and Parks Department here in this city here a few months ago. So once we get a definite date, they said they would approve it because they said, no reason not. So I'd like to get the, oh, so we would do a demo show to showcase the technology and see how it works, so the public and everyone could get a better idea of what it is about and how it functions to make clean electricity out of nothing pretty much, just kinetic energy from the oceans, pushing a blade, causing it to turn, similar to the case in the case of wind turbines, the wind pushing the blade to turn and make electricity. So it's a technology pretty much in parallel. So I'd like to ask the committee to get involved to evaluate the technology for future adoption and integration into the community. Gav Nielsen wanted to bring oceanology to San Francisco years ago when he was the mayor, but it was too complicated and too costly, maybe 30 million, and they were going to do it under distance, the water surface, to collect currents moving underneath. And that's complicated when you do things underneath the water, maybe liability cost, insurance cost, so they gave up. I think we are at the right time because we have so many electric vehicles coming, and we surely need clean energy. Now, how, there is thousands of people trying to do it in different countries, but finding the right approach that's cost efficient is the challenge. I think we came up with an approach that's very simple, cost effective, and we may be able to beat solar or wind. We're confident. Because water is 800 times as heavy as wind, and same volume of water versus air moving at the same speed, like a cannonball against a balloon if you throw it, will make it like impact 800 times as big. We don't expect to make electricity 800 times cheaper than the wind energy industry can now, but we have inherited advantage given to us by nature because water is so heavy and so powerful. You can see the waves crashing and eroding the rocks and carving. So if we do it right, I think we can beat energy, solar and wind. That's the challenge now. So if that is the case, then this would be a big industry, would hire millions, maybe thousands of people, it would be a big industry.
Thank you.
Imagine if I can generate electricity cheaper than lead.
Thank you. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'd like to ask for a slot to come here to future answer questions.
We can't answer your questions now, so.
Much, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Harmio, longtime homeowner here in Pacifica, and I'm here this evening to express my concerns about the upcoming February 25 trial of William &amp; Gentry Jasperson. The couple accused of fraud while gathering signatures here in Pacifica for a petition. They originally were charged with multiple counts of felony perjury, signing fictitious names, identity theft. This petition drive defeated an ordinance which would have protected renters here in Pacifica temporarily from rent increases. As a result of this defeat, many of our community members suffered rent increases, some as much as $600 or $700 more a month, a tremendous increase. Many were forced to leave our city. So I'm concerned that this young couple may be the only ones to suffer any consequences for this fraud. I'm concerned that the company that vetted, hired, trained them will not bear any responsibility. And I'm concerned that we will not learn what kind of culture this company created for their employees, or that this trial may not tell us how this company was chosen to come here to Pacifica, or how much they were paid for their services. I'm concerned that this trial will only serve to punish two young employees for the hurt inflicted on our community, and I'm concerned that we may not learn how to prevent this type of fraud from hurting us in the future. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. And next is Council Communications. And Dear DeMartin first.
So I wanted to give a quick update on Beach Coalition activities. We've got the surf movie coming up on February 8th. This year, we're showing It Ain't Pretty. It is a film by a local surfer and filmmaker, De La Soul, and it's about women who are riding big waves in Ocean Beach and surrounding areas. Some of those women will be here, and there's two showings, one at 5:00 and then I think one at 8:00. This show will sell out, and it is one of the best events of the year, so you won't want to miss it. Get your tickets now. Earth Day also is April 27. If you haven't picked a spot that you want to help out at, you can find a spot that you'd like to lead the charge at. We will help you get volunteers there, so you can reach out via the website, or you can reach out to me, and I'm always looking for volunteers from my site as well. And also, I just wanted to give an update on MLK Day of Service, which was not this past Sunday, but the Sunday before that. There was 160 volunteers that showed up for the beach cleanup at Lindemar. And then right after that, immediately following, there was a beach planting and habitat restoration. So 105 folks showed up for that, and over 500 native plants were replanted to help bring our Lindemar beach back to its native habitat. So if you have a chance, have a walk around there, and you'll see a lot less ice plant and a lot more native species there. Also, I attended the Peninsula Clean, my first as an official board member in swearing in of the Peninsula Clean Energy Board, and not too much this week that went on, but looking forward to bringing you a lot more updates. There's a lot of exciting news coming up. And I think tomorrow, the PG&E is planning on declaring bankruptcy, so there will be some probably news to follow after that as well. And then I just wanted to give an update on the Highway 1 adaptive signals, to help mitigate congestion. And there's been confirmed funding from, well, we have confirmed with Caltrans, and I've been told by City Manager that I can talk about this this evening, that there's program funding for... funding for four lights in Pacifica, all four lights on Highway One, and the new system's going to be based on the in-road detector loop, so it's not the same functionality as the traffic cameras that are up there now, but it's probably going to be more effective and more helpful, because we're going to be using two pieces of technology. The funding is not guaranteed yet, but we've been asked for a letter of support, and we're for the most part expecting that funding. It's looking like a contract's going to be awarded in June of this year, so stay tuned for more information, we'll keep you updated, but this is pretty awesome progress for, and pretty good news for the highway congestion management. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, one more thing. I wanted to say thank you to everyone for being patient with me last week as I attended the call remotely. My mother also thanks you, as I was able to be there and help her out that week while she had just gotten out of the hospital, so thank you for being patient with me.
Thank you. Mike O'Neil.
I attended the meeting of LAFCO and Pacifica Dems where we had Supervisor Horstley and Supervisor Groom there, and it was quite informative to hear the two of them talk about some of the initiatives in the county, what they're looking to do, what they're seeing in the future, and that was just kind of interesting. Also, there was three of us that went to the Council of Cities Dinner, and I was actually quite surprised, but the speakers were two of the survivors from Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. So it was two kids that have gone through what none of us hope ever happens in any school in America, let alone Pacifica. So it was interesting to hear their touring the country and trying to raise awareness of what cities can do and counties can do to try to combat gun violence in America. So it was quite informative and interesting.
Mary Beer.
So last week, I attended the New Mayor and Council Members Academy up in Sacramento. It was really informative. I completed the mandatory sexual harassment training and the ethics in law. We learned about so many things, and we learned about the Brown Act, and financial responsibility, and land use, and communication, but more importantly, I was able to create relationships with other leaders across the state, ones that were really close by, our friends in Daly City, and San Bruno, and South San Francisco, but also down in Santa Cruz. And one of the most memorable things that happened while I was there is we sat at a table and shared some time with the council members from Paradise, and he was able to detail us on all the things that he went through. He also lost his home and his business. And I asked him, you know, how can cities help each other in processes like this? And what he said was that he really needs planners, and engineers, and attorneys, and so if anybody out there feels like giving a day or two of service, please let me know. I can contact him directly. I think it's one way that we can, as a city, help each other. So it was a really great experience for me to meet him and talk with him. I'm adjusting my schedule to get used to all of the new committee responsibilities, and so I'll have more to report back next time. There'll be a meeting on Wednesday morning for the Age Friendly Pacifica Group, so I'm looking forward to that, and I think that, oh, and I had a meeting with Lorenzo, and we learned all about the budget, so thank you very much, and that's about all. Thanks.
Thank you. I attended the Emergency Services Council, where Sue DeGruy was presented with an award for her longevity on that committee, sixteen years, something like that. I was also still shocked to know that only twelve percent of the people in the county get the emergency alerts. It's really simple. You can go online to the Office of Emergency Services and sign up for it. It comes on your telephone. It will tell you if there are tsunami warnings, if the sirens are going to go off, if there's a mountain lion in your neighborhood. So it's really important, and I'm still amazed at the small number of people. They think that's great. I think it's horrible. I went to the CK Water Committee, which we're just still forming, like I say every time. The Terra Nova Education Foundation fundraiser, it was their first annual fundraiser, and that was a good time. Also, the Democrats. I went to the Association, the Asian American Association of Realtors Installation Dinner. So mostly from that, I got, I gained a lot of weight. They serve massive amounts of food, and it's also, it's the same. It's communicating with all the people surrounding our area. It's quite a good thing. I went to the Home for All. Home for All was more about teaching us how to listen, and that listening is more important, and we are getting a grant from Home for All to have discussions, listening events regarding housing, and affordable housing, and the fact that we all need affordable housing, and just listening and hearing what everyone has to say about it. I went to the ribbon cutting at Chase. So people, if you don't know, there is a Chase Bank in Lindemar, and it's a different model. You're no lines, you just, you meet with a person when you go in. It's a different whole banking type, so try that out. I went to the Recology Managers Dinner, which was good too, because we talked about garbage all over the state. I went to the Council of Cities. I went to the ADEMs, which is the voting for people to go into the assembly from local areas, not very well-publicized, and we're going to have to talk about both sides of that when it comes up for the Republicans and the Democrats, because they are the people who represent us, and voting was held there, and I didn't think it was very well noticed. And that's it for me. And that's it for everybody. Sue has another.
Not quite. Sue. So I went to a lot of the things that the folks that have already mentioned. Mary and I and city manager Woodhouse spent three days in Sacramento, training with the League of California Cities, and I agree that while the sessions were really valuable and really helped, it was a second pass at the budget information and learning how to interpret city budgets and how to understand and read them. We learned all of our transparency in government. It's a lot of information to take in, but really, really good sessions and good materials that are available to us afterward. But I agree that the networking opportunities were probably almost as valuable. Having an opportunity to informally gather with Senator Jerry Hill and have a gathering in the hotel downstairs with some of the local electeds from over the hill just really made building those relationships even easier, and I think that is going to serve us in good stead as we move forward. Right after we returned, it was the Democrats' meeting, and that was Saturday morning with Supervisors Groom and Horstley, and I was very encouraged at that meeting to hear about some possible opportunities for relief from the county with regard to working with the underserved homeless that we're experiencing, that are experiencing difficulties in Pacifica. So I want to pursue that. I want to find out how the county can help us with more funding. The Home for All training was really good. I agree. I think it presented a model that is a way to engage the community in conversation and listen to people's concerns, get people around a table, not necessarily an audience seating like this, but an actual roundtable where people can see each other and talk to each other, and people with divergent points of view are heard. It's a facilitated process, so there's someone at each table who's going to help make sure that those conversations are productive and respectful, and I'm looking forward to implementing that in Pacifica. I think there are a lot of issues here that we can use that kind of approach with. It was fun to go and welcome Chase Bank to Lindemar Center, even though they've been there for a little while, the official welcoming, and I was very pleased that their little snack foods that they had were all locally sourced, and so that was really nice. By the way, Soul Grinds has awesome hors d'oeuvres, if anyone needs to know. The Council of Cities Dinner in Burlingame was, again, part of that ongoing training, building those relationships. I feel like I'm just getting to really comprehend how all of these city structures and organizations work together, and it's a lot to take in. So in addition, I just want to state that I've heard from the community on two issues of great concern. They are traffic tie-ups that we experienced on Highway One over the MLK weekend. I know that the city staff worked with Caltrans on it, and I checked in with a couple of folks. It seems like it's not as terrible as it was, but there was something really broken, and it tied up traffic all the way down to and through Nick's parking lot. So as we use the loop system, I think our biggest challenge will be to make sure that we're also working with Caltrans to keep our, the streets that feed onto the highway in mind, so that we can avoid those kind of tie-ups. And the other concern I've heard about are some homeless encampments, and I know that city staff's working closely with the Resource Center to reach out to those folks, and we want to note that the Thursday, the thirty-first, I believe, is the homeless count day, and I look forward to a report from city staff and the Resource Center to see what more can be done to assist those folks. Thanks.
Thank you. Staff Communications.
Mayor Valalas, members of the Pacifica City Council. My name is Lorenzo Hines. I'm the Assistant City Manager in for City Manager Woodhouse this evening. We do not have any announcements tonight.
Thank you. There are no public hearings, so we'll move on to council consideration. Item six, the approval of consultant services, and we'll wait till everyone gets up here for the report.
Before I get started, my name is Tina Wermeister. I'm the Planning Director, and before I get started, I wanted to introduce to you Joshua Montemayor, who's our new Management Analyst. He contributed to the staff report along with Christian Murdock and Bonnie O'Connor. So the item before you is consideration of an agreement with the consulting firm of Dyad and Batia to prepare the Sharp Park specific plan, complete the general plan and local coastal plan updates, and prepare related environmental documents. The general plan and LCP update were initiated in 2008, and drafts were completed in 2014. However, council requested additional public engagement prior to considering adoption. These documents have also been, update of these documents have also been on the city council's priority project list since at least 2016. And before I go further describing the scope of work, I just wanted to step back and give a little, a little brief description of what these documents are for some of the public who may be listening. I know the council's aware. The general plan is a guiding document required to be developed and periodically updated by local governments, and this document informs all land use decisions and lays the foundation for community policies related to matters such as economic development, parks and open space, and community design in addition to land use. All of the policies and ordinances subsequently adopted by the city must be consistent with the general plan, and as we are coastal community, Pacifica also has a local coastal program which guides development in the coastal zone consistent with the Coastal Act. The general plan and LCP were last comprehensively updated in 1980, therefore it is important that these foundational documents are updated to reflect the current goals and needs of the community and changes that have occurred in the interim, including economic and market changes. Although over the past several months, the focus has been on sea level rise adaptation policy, the general plan and LCP cover a broad range of important topics. Now, for a specific plan for the Sharp Park area, this document will provide detailed development standards, infrastructure requirements, and implementation measures for this specific geographic area, as the name suggests. The goal with the Sharp Park specific plan is to provide clear, detailed expectations for improvements in the area with consistent development proposals being able to commence more quickly. So moving on to the consultant and the scope of work, the firm of Dyad and Batia was originally selected after thorough RFP process to prepare the general plan and LCP update in 2008, as I mentioned, and the contract before you this evening will complete this work. Dyad and Batia gained considerable knowledge through this process about the city, is in possession of relevant background and technical documents, and can efficiently reengage on this project. A new consultant will likely require additional time and funding to take over the project and get up to speed. Additionally, Dyad and Batia continues to be a well-respected leader in the planning field. The addition of the Sharp Park specific plan to the Planning Department's work plan presented an additional opportunity for efficiencies and budget savings. Dyad and Batia is qualified and able to incorporate this specific plan into their scope of work, which will result in the elimination of duplicate work between consultants preparing the various documents. The detailed scope of work was attached to the staff report. The scope includes eleven community meetings, outreach events, and workshops, eight stakeholder meetings, plus thirteen Planning Commission and City Council meetings or study sessions, which are an additional opportunity for public input. Project milestones will include preparation of administrative and public review drafts of all documents, and the EIR, and eventually final documents for adoption. The consultant team has scoped an optional task to complete a parking analysis and provide recommendations with the Sharp Park specific plan. The cost for this task is fifteen thousand dollars, and the recommended action would include this task in the scope. In the Sharp Park area, parking and the small lot configuration has been and will continue to be a hurdle for commercial reinvestment, particularly along Palmetto and Francisco, so staff feels that this is an important topic to study. To cover unexpected expenses during the course of the project, approximately twenty-two-thousand-six-hundred contingency has been provided. The overall cost of the project with the optional parking analysis and contingency is six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The city collects the general plan maintenance fee on building permits, and as of the end of last fiscal year, six hundred and sixty-six, over six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars was collected in general plan maintenance fees, so that demonstrates that we have collected adequate fees to accommodate the budget for this project. And there's also adequate budget authority in the current fiscal year, and the remaining budget can be authorized in current budget years. So before concluding, I wanted to touch briefly on the schedule. The entire scope of work is scheduled to be completed by June 2020, and as you will recall from the adaptation policy discussions, the transmittal of the draft LCP to the Coastal Commission must occur by the end of this year. I just wanted to state that this schedule does accommodate the Coastal Commission grant requirement and allows the general plan and EIR process to continue to completion while the Coastal Commission is reviewing the LCP document, which we would have transmitted before the end of 2019. So with that, the recommended action is for the council to approve the agreement for consulting services between the city and Dyad and Batia, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. And we're happy to answer. And we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. I don't see any lights on. Anyone want to ask questions?
I have a question, but I don't know where my light button is. There.
That's why I didn't call on you for the other. Sue Beckmeyer. Sue Beckmeyer.
Did I push the button to turn it off?
No, she did.
No, I do.
Okay. I have a couple of questions on the neighborhood outreach portion. So I'm looking at page two, section D, and I didn't note, Tina, when you just enumerated the number of meetings, community meetings, this section refers to up to five neighborhood outreach events to kick off the general plan, LCP, and specific plan process. So what were the number of other meetings that you referred to?
So as you go through the scope, there are various other meetings that are mentioned. So there's five, and then the initial neighborhood outreach, as you mentioned, and then I'm just kind of going through the scope here. Various joint and individual meetings with the Planning Commission and City Council. On page 10, there's stakeholder meetings, up to eight, over a two-day period. On page 11, there's three pop-up outreach events at the top of the page there, a community visioning workshop. On page 12, community workshop on land use concepts, and there's several others throughout. But I just wanted to point out that they're sprinkled throughout the scope of work.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you. One of the things that I noted on page two is, in that paragraph under item D, it states, "Meetings may emphasize different aspects of the process based on relevance to individual neighborhoods." And I would hope that we can make that a really strong statement, that meetings will emphasize different aspects of the process that are relevant to specific neighborhoods. I think that that's going to be the key to success here, is working closely with the neighbors in the various areas. I think we learned that from our last go-around, and I want to make sure we benefit from that learning in engaging in this process. So that's one area that I had a concern. I wanted to see if we can strengthen that or address that in some way. And I would like to ask on page eight, if we can please, I know it's, you know, probably not necessary, but could we please add the word libraries to under land use? There are one, two, three, four bullet items with dashes. It's the third one down, no, fourth one down, sorry. Public facilities, including schools, parks, and fire stations. Can we please add schools, parks, fire stations, and add libraries to that? And there's another place somewhere that I may find again and ask you to note it there, too. Those are my main questions. Oh, I did want to verify on page 16. Energy and greenhouse gases is the first paragraph on that page, and it says modeling will incorporate information and analysis from the city's CAP. I just want to make sure I understand that's Climate Action Plan?
That's correct.
Oh, good. I'm kidding. And I did have a question on page 15, with regard to SEQA. Intersection delay and LOS analysis. What is LOS?
Level of service.
Okay. So that's to do with transportation and...
And how well the intersection is functioning. And so if there's a large amount of delay and backup, it'll be, you know, a level of service F. If it's free-flowing, most times it may be an A or a B.
Okay, so that kind of ties in with what I was saying earlier about the traffic concerns that were expressed in Rockaway. So that kind of analysis would be incorporated there.
Yes, absolutely.
To address those kind of concerns. Great. Thank you very much. Oh, page 18. I'm looking at page 17 and 18, and I may be confusing two different parts, but under the final EIR, paragraph C1, it says, "Because the level of effort for the final EIR is not predictable in advance, our budget allocates 120 hours of D and B staff time and 30 hours of DKS time to this effort." But then over on page 18, under scope of work budget assumptions, bullet item two, it states 90 hours of D and B time and 30 hours of DKS. Are these two different things?
So I believe on page 17 that they're combining the two, and then on page 18, they've split them out. So 90 hours of Dyat and Batia's time to respond to comments, and then DKS is the traffic consultant, and so they're assuming that they would have 30 hours of time to respond to comments, and combined 120.
So you add the 90 and 30 together, and you get the 120 that's on page 17?
Right. Oh, I see what you mean.
Right?
Yeah. Okay, I have, we have a representative from Dyat and Batia, Catherine Pan here, who can...
Because we like the 120.
Yes.
Just want to say.
Who can respond to the discrepancy here.
Like that 120 number. At least I do. Those are all my questions. Thanks for being patient.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Pan. I'm a Senior Associate at Dyat and Batia. So I'll be working on this project once this contract is approved. So for the 120 hours and 30 hours, that must be a typo. I would, we'd probably have to take a look at that again, but I assume because it's in the body of it, the 120 is probably the correct one.
Mary Beer.
So I put in a bunch of questions, and they were answered, so I want to thank staff for answering all of my questions. I really appreciate that. There's one thing I do want to just make note of, and that's right at the agreement for consultant services, under Article 1, 1.3, and it says, "Time is of the essence." And I know that this is like a standard thing that goes into contracts, and I just wanted to express that because of all the responses that we received from the community over the LCP process, I'm just not comfortable with the "it" being as part of this. Like, "Time is of the essence" makes it seem like we're in a hurry, and so I just wanted to make sure that that was put on the record, that I felt that way about that statement. And then I have some questions. So, in the scope of work, under the neighborhood outreach, I'd like to also say that a lot of places, actually, a lot of places in the scope of work, it says can and may instead of will, and so I'm curious about that, and if, where it says like, alternatively, a standalone website for the specific plan can be prepared and maintained, and so if this is included, is it going to cost more?
No, so I can address that one specifically. So, a website or webpage is part of the scope. The difference here is whether or not IT, and we haven't had this discussion yet, is comfortable giving the consultant a log-on to modify a webpage on our website, or if it would be their own website that's created for this project. So that's why there's that language in that paragraph.
Okay. And then in section D, the neighborhood outreach, where it says, "Meetings may emphasize different aspects of the process," I was just curious of who determines what to emphasize.
So each neighborhood meeting, we would be, staff would be working with the consultant to highlight which areas of what we're going to talk about at the meeting. And I'll just say that we haven't gotten into that level of detail yet, but what we were struggling with is that we have a specific plan and a general plan update going on at the same time. And so the reason why some of this language is like that is because what we, staff has brainstormed is that when we're in Sharp Park, for example, and having that neighborhood meeting, that that may be focused on the specific plan, but also talk about the general plan more generally. And if we go, you know, to maybe a meeting in the back of the valley or in the north end of Pacifica, that maybe that would be reversed, but we would still talk about all aspects of the project. And we also recognize that we may have areas where there's been particularly controversial areas of land, like Pedro Point, for example, that may need something else entirely, kind of more specific for their area.
Thank you so much.
No? We don't have any cards.
You haven't opened the public area, have you? Yeah, but we get public comment.
Well, it was our questions first, and then public comment after.
Okay. I thought she looked like she was going to...
No, we're on questions still.
So, Maya?
Yes.
My questions were also answered via email, but for the record and for, you know, the public's education, some of the questions were around why choose Dyat and Batia, and some of the answers were around, well, they already did part of our general plan, so there's that, we don't need to reinvent the wheel here, right? They are already up to speed, so any other organization that we brought on would need time and money to be brought up to speed, whereas Dyat and Batia has already sort of put that in there. And then there were some other questions that I'm not remembering right now, but for me, it was more around, it was more around, you know, why didn't we go out to RFP? And I don't have a problem with that. I also appreciate fresh perspective, so I would request that, you know, the representative here hears that, that we are interested in fresh perspectives, we are interested in, you know, cutting-edge innovative ideas, and just kind of remembering where we live and that our environment, and, you know, as former mayor DeGria said, is our economy, and so making sure that we're taking all those things into consideration, and really hearing the community and making sure that what they say is heard and where appropriate, you know, applied. So those are sort of my comments.
Thank you. And another question that was asked was, is Dyat and Batia related basically to ESA? And the question was asked and answered, and that is not the same. ESA did the local coastal plan, and they are separate companies, and the reason for going to this company, like Deirdre said, and like we all read, that was because they have already gone through half of this process already, at least, with the community, and it's a continuation.
Correct.
So. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this? I have no yellow cards.
I'll make a motion.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council.
I just...
What question or comments?
Madam Mayor, before deliberations begin, I would just like to address the "time is of the essence" provision in the agreement. Just to say that it is our standard consultant agreement, and it is a provision that is frequently in contracts, I would say regularly in contracts, that have a timetable or some sort of time requirement attached, so that if there is a breach of contract on that time issue, that may be pursued by the city.
Thank you. Mike?
I just wanted to say that I'm very happy to see this come to the council. This is moving forward on the West Sharp Park revitalization, and the remodeling of Palmetto Avenue was the first step, and this is trying to bring it to completion as well as make it easier for a business owner to actually want, know what is expected of them. A specific plan will, and staff, correct me, say that we want a grocery, we want a store here, we want housing here, we want parking here, we want mixed-use projects, et cetera, we would like restaurants, maybe even to the extent of, like, I think Millbrae actually has a prohibition against any more beauty salons on their, on their main street or whatever, because beauty salons are service industry, therefore, they don't bring in any tax revenue. This is a way for actually to enhance the revenue and bottom line of the city, and it will go all the way west shore park, it'll go Francisco, all the way to Beach Boulevard, correct? If I'm correct?
Correct.
Emphasis on Palmetto, but is going to go the whole neighborhood?
It'll go the neighborhood and may also include part of East Shore Park.
Okay, okay. So I'm just happy to see this forward. This is a giant leap for us to move forward in, you know, one small step for council, one giant leap for Pacifica to move forward. Anyhow, I just wanted to make that comment.
I'll make a motion.
There are no other comments? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for consultant services between the City of Pacifica and Dyat and Batia, an amount of $660,000, $660,000, and authorize the city manager to execute this agreement.
Second.
Everyone vote? And that passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
The next item is item number seven, the excess ERAF for 2018 and 19.
Good evening. Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines, I have some good news for you tonight. As you know, that we receive, or San Mateo County collects property taxes and deposits a portion of those taxes into the Education Revenue Augmentation Fund to fund K through 12 schools and community colleges. Any excess ERAF is revenue, or excess ERAF is revenue that remains after the schools receive fundings that meet the state mandated funding levels. Each January and February, those dollars are redistributed to the cities in the county. And so here in Pacifica, we anticipate getting a check for the excess ERAF usually about the third week, second or third week of January. Now, in the past, we have brought the issue to you in January, and then we've made the decision as to what to do with those funds. But with the passage of the 1819 budget, we decided to pre-allocate those dollars, with just assuming that they would come in, because they have come in in the past pretty consistently. And so we have the 1819 budget pre-allocates those dollars. $83,000 of those dollars that come in will be for the Pacifica Resource Center, $5,000 for the Pacifica Beach Coalition, and the balance of what's left goes into the Disaster Accounting Fund, which is Fund 38. And the Disaster Accounting Fund is that fund that we use to handle any and all emergencies here in Pacifica, such as seawall collapsing or responses to natural disasters. So this year, we've received 2.450 million in excess ERAF. Our average ERAF amount during the time I've been with you over the last four years has been about 1.8 million. So there's about $600,000 extra. The county has made a small accounting change that resulted in what we believe is going to be this one-time increase, but that increase is roughly $600,000. And so we have that scenario. Now, I'm going to, I'm actually on packet page 89. When we settled nine of our 10 labor agreements, and there's only one agreement that's outstanding right now, we indicated that one of the sources for paying for the increased salaries was suspending the transfer that our funds make to the motor pool replacement fund. And every year, the general fund and a number of other funds pay into the motor pool replacement fund for the replacement, to support the replacement of vehicles. But because we have these increased wages... But because we have these increased wages, it was decided that we would, each fund would hold on to those dollars. And if we needed to replace cars, we could turn to ERAF if it was appropriate. So it'll give you that little background there. So this year, we've received 2.4 million in ERAF. We still have a need to replace cars and trucks. And so what we are proposing, and you'll see this in the subsequent item, what we are proposing is that we move 530,000 of this 2.4 million into Fund 72 to help with the replacement of cars and trucks. And if you look at the bottom of packet page 89, you will see in the fiscal impact section that if we were able to use this 530,000, the ultimate transfer, it would not affect the transfers to the PRC or to the Beach Coalition, but the but the transfer to the Disaster Accounting Fund would be 1.8 million. If we did not do the 530 for the replacement of cars, the transfer to the Disaster Accounting Fund would be roughly 2.4 million. And so this report is informational, and so we're not necessarily looking for a decision at this point, because the decision item is the next item. But I wanted to give you that information, so you'll have the background for the next item. But it's all good news.
And before we move on, there is a correction in this report. In line two on page 89, it says 18 million instead of 1.8 million, just a misplaced period.
Oh, yes, yes.
So it is not normally approximately 18 million, it's 1.8 million. Mike O'Neil?
That would be nice, though.
Yes, it would. I thought it was really nice when I read it.
Yes, yes.
A question. If I remember correctly, how much did we spend on the fire engine a couple months ago? Wasn't that like 700 something?
602,000. And I, yeah.
Go ahead.
And I am currently working on financing 500,000 of that. And we have not closed yet, and but I am, but we're probably about a week from closing. But yeah, so we have not signed the papers yet.
What do you mean by finding 500,000?
I'm sorry.
Funding, oh, I thought you said finding.
Financing.
Okay, good, because I, when we voted on that, it was kind of like just done deal, except paperwork. Okay.
Right.
So if I remember correctly, we took a loan out for that.
Yes.
Is there any advantage for us to pay off that loan?
Well, given that the loan hasn't been taken out, we, you know, we save quite a bit of interest.
Would...
I don't have that figure on.
No, I know you're being kind of caught cold on this, so...
But no, we, if we were to pay, if we were to pay for the engine with this half a million, we would not have to incur any interest expense related to the loan. The interest rate, the all-in rate was, the interest rate itself was 3.43, the all-in rate was 3.61. And we would save. The city would not have to incur that 3.61.
So, and we were gonna be borrowing?
Half a mil.
Five?
500,000, 502,000.
Okay. So have you done an analysis to see if that would maybe be better? Because one of my concerns is that if we get any funding for the seawall, there is a need for matching funds. And the Disaster Accounting Fund, I assume, is the fund that that money would come out of.
Yes.
Now, do you know the balance off the top of your head of that fund?
Um, no.
Because remember, previous councils borrowed from this fund for Peter to pay Paul, and John got in there too, and everything.
I don't have the fund balance offhand. We did combine the ERAF fund in with Fund 38. Fund 38 was one of those funds that was in the negative.
Mm-hmm.
And...
Define 38 for everybody, please.
Huh?
What is Fund 38?
Oh, I'm sorry. Fund 38 is the Disaster Accounting Fund.
Okay.
And it was one of those funds that was perpetually in the negative.
Right.
But at the same time, when we received ERAF dollars, the bulk of the ERAF dollars that were in Fund 30 were set aside for disaster-related expenses. So we we put all of those funds in the same, in the same fund. And so, and no, I don't have that figure on me, but, I mean, I can get it for you. But that's, that was the consolidation of the two funds.
I mean, that's, my concern is, I understand why you want to do it and all of that. However, I am concerned that at some point, we may need matching funds from the disaster fund for, as we apply for grants, we have to be able to show that we can actually perform with matching funds. And we don't know what the, off the top of your head, and I understand it's off the top of your head, you don't know the Disaster Accounting Fund, and 2.3, if I remember correctly from the last estimate we had for repairing the seawall, was something that's roughly 10% of it, roughly. If I remember, the seawall was like around 27, so this is maybe 70% of that.
Right.
And I'm just concerned about, not that we don't need the vehicles, et cetera, you know, and all that, I'm not arguing the logic and why we should do it, it is kind of one-time money for one-time purchases.
Mm-hmm.
But I, we also have an unknown in the purse liability coming down the road.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't, would not want to hit the Disaster Accounting Fund to pay for the purse liability, because Disaster Accounting is the only fund that has any money in it. So is there an advantage, because I remember when you did, when we did the fire engine, you said that we got like a group discount or something. Is there an advantage for us to perform purchasing the police vehicles now? Is there a discount, or is it just kind of like we're walking on the lot and getting them now?
Well, I don't think there's a, there's a volume discount associated with this, because when we purchased the fire engine, we went in with a, as part of the deal with Brisbane and Daly City. And so those, those vehicles that they purchased were, you know, it was a pretty, it was a pretty intense purchase. I mean, it was a high-dollar figure between all three cities, and so Fire was able to leverage and bring that that total dollar figure down. These vehicles are just vehicles that we need. We are looking at the lowest cost that we can get for these vehicles via local dealerships or via the state contract. And but, and so the only discount that we may get is is buying things through the state contract. And so that's, that's basically leveraging the entire state of California, state government. And they tend to get good prices.
And that's kind of like an ongoing thing that doesn't end at a certain point or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
That's my thoughts right now. I'd like to hear from other people and see what they think, too.
Deirdre?
I appreciate those comments, Mike, and I also was thinking about the same thing. And I just wanted to point out that the, that last week, we learned that the Beach Boulevard seawall grant application to boating and waterways grant for 750,000 was not included in the governor's budget. So that's just kind of stressing more of a need to keep money in the Disaster Accounting Fund, just sort of food for thought. And, you know, in cases like this, Assistant City Manager, I would sort of defer to your professional expertise in terms of where you think our money is best put, and if, you know, and if we can lock in an interest rate for the the engine, then, and if that makes more sense otherwise, we're just sort of playing cards here.
Right.
A thought.
And in that budget item, no boating and waterways grants were approved in the budget. So it wasn't...
Were included.
There was actually no boatings and waterways in the entire budget statewide, so it wasn't just Pacifica.
That's what I was saying.
And that process is not concluded. Am I correct? That budget process is not concluded.
The governor's budget, yeah, the governor's budget was released, I think, January 10th. They've got to go through hearings, both on the assembly side and the senate side, and they will hopefully have a signed final state budget by June 30.
Are there any more questions? We do have a comment from the public. So...
Your public.
Okay. Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilman, and Staff. I'm Tiger Jazz Trolls Big Stick. I am currently serving as the Vice President of the Board of Directors of the Pacifica Resource Center. And on behalf of the Resource Center, I just wanted to say thank you for ensuring that we are included in the budget in this way. That 83,000 makes a great deal of difference, ensures we are able to do the work we are doing in keeping the community secure in the way we keep them secure. And I want to say thank you to Lorenzo for making sure that you found a way to keep us going in that way. It means a lot that the entire city is supporting the effort to make sure that everybody in this city is taken into account and supported through even the most difficult of times. So thank you all, and thank you again.
Thank you. Seeing, oh, Chris Redfield. And can I add to his card?
Yeah, you can just put it on there.
Thank you again. This was an item I kind of looked at today, you know, the quick afternoon review. I did see that it was recommended to do the, I think it was an admirable thing to do the, what the city manager recommends with doing that money. If you've looked at the vehicles that the city uses, there are a lot of Band-Aids, a lot of duct tape on those vehicles. Quite honestly, the environment that Pacifica is in is very hard on vehicles, not to mention the, just the overall use of them. There's something you want to start every time, no matter whether it was a police car, dump truck, whatever it may be. That is an interesting pickle, I must say, to have the fire engine, ones were the fire engine debt. So if we can find an easy way to do that without, you know, like I said, cashing that money and losing that, not losing it, but I mean, investing that 500,000, I think, and again, not knowing what the number for the disaster fund is, it's always, we're always on the edge of a disaster. So I think it's a, it's a definitely gonna take a little more investment in time and research before I make a final decision on that. But again, if we've all seen the city vehicles, not all of them are in the same condition, but many of them are, and I can make one recommendation. When we do get new vehicles, can we get a bigger than three-inch diameter door sticker that says City of Pacifica? Just, just a little humor there, so. But yeah, please, please do that research. Don't want to tie that money up unnecessarily, again, because if we do need that money for matching funds, and our pockets are empty, that's a, that's a very large deal for us. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Sue, you're the only other member of the public here. Do you have nothing? We'll bring it back to council.
Can I get a clarification? This is not a voting item right now.
No, not necessarily. The voting item is the next item.
Next item is, and it's referring to the same information that we're discussing now.
Similar, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, I do have the the budget figures for Fund 38. And so at the end of, or by June 2019, I am projecting that that fund balance will be at 245,000. That's rounded, it's approximate figure. 245,000. Now, if you add 1.8 to that, you're over 2 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Disaster.
Fund 38, disaster fund.
Mm-hmm. This was the projection I made with the 1819 budget.
And I also want to be sure everybody knows that I'm not against new police cars, okay? I'm just, it's just, when you gotta do Solomon's baby up here, you know?
No, these are, these are business decisions, and we, you know, we have to, we have to think about it.
So we're accepting this report?
Well, I think the course is, is, you know, I've, I'm thinking out loud, you know, and I just have concerns that, you know, we are January in winter right now, and there could be issues, and if this is information item, there's, we don't have to do this tonight, we could postpone this to when we see what happens the rest of this winter, or we get a better handle on the budget, correct?
Right.
No, we can't. I mean, because our next agenda item is basically figuring out what we want to do with this money is the next question.
Right. That's why I asked my clarifying question.
But if we haven't firmed up the, I mean, maybe we can close this agenda item and then, and then talk about what we want to talk about in the next agenda item. So we accept this report and then actually talk about what we should talk about.
Do we vote on that?
Yes, I would recommend that you move to, somebody make a motion to accept the report and then that be seconded, and then the motion is voted on.
I move to accept the 201819 excess ERAF fund report. I'll second. We don't have to vote, right? Or do we?
Voting.
Okay.
That passes five to nothing. We will move on to item number eight. Lorenzo?
So item number six, or, yeah, item number eight, sorry, is the actual item where we are, the recommended action is to adopt the resolution to approve the purchase of 15 replacement vehicles and related prep charges for a total of 1,38,000, and also authorize the use of 530,000 of excess ERAF funds for the purchase of police and public works vehicles. Now, as we talked about before, well, actually, we did mention this, before, the city replaces its vehicles, trucks, and heavy equipment on an annual basis. In prior years, the city has fallen behind because of our fiscal constraints in maintaining a consistent replacement schedule. In 201718, we utilize ERAF, excess ERAF, to catch up with our replacement schedule, and we were able to make significant strides. The vehicle replacement strategy in this particular report also utilizes excess ERAF to help us continue that catch-up. As I mentioned earlier, our vehicle replacements are funded primarily out of Fund 72, which is our motor pool replacement fund. And I also mentioned the impact of labor agreements, and that this fund is, at least for this year, not receiving any contributions from the other funds. So let's talk about the vehicles that we're proposing to replace. There are, I'm on packet page 93, and there are five police vehicles, there are one fire vehicle, six from Public Works Wastewater, and three from Public Works Field Services. Now, there are different funding sources for these particular vehicles, and we'll cover that toward the end of this document. So as you're making a, or deliberating about whether we should take this step and use that 530,000, take a listen to, you know, some of the, some of the issues that the departments are facing with these vehicles. And so we'll start with the Pacifica Police Department, and their flight, their fleet consists of marked emergency vehicles and unmarked vehicles. We replaced one half of the marked vehicles last year during 17 and 18. The second half of the fleet is in need of replacement. This particular segment of the fleet is overdue for replacement. We've got some vehicles having well in excess of 100,000 miles. Now granted, these are police pursuit vehicles, so it would behoove us to make sure that they are in the best shape they can be. And they'll, essentially, there are five SUV interceptors or explorers. We call them explorers, the PD calls them interceptors. And they are specially equipped. There is a base cost here, there's the equipment cost, and that's to add the light racks and various other things. And I've added a incremental amount for tax, and you can see the total cost. And so the police vehicles will be funded out of that 530,000 from ERAF. And I'm gonna move... And I'm going to move to Public Works Wastewater. Now, Public Works, and we'll start with Wastewater. I combine both of them, but we'll start with Wastewater, and they're looking for just various work vehicles, the Chevy Suburban, pickup trucks, F-250, a couple of Dodge Rams. And so, these vehicles are necessary for, because, because the wastewater treatment plant is a very sort of capital-intensive operation, and they're moving heavy stuff all day. On the other side of Public Works, Field Services, they're looking for more pickups, four F-250, two F-250s, and an F-800. Now, the F-800 is interesting because it's our asphalt truck. So, when we go to do overlays or to fill potholes, that's where this particular truck comes in, and it's sort of a mammoth truck. All the trucks requested are more powerful than the current fleet, and it's important to note that the new trucks have sort of a larger carrying capacity. And so, in order to relieve the pressure from Fund Seventy-Two, because wastewater, well, just, just speak to wastewater. Wastewater has funds in Fund Seventy-Two, set aside for the replacement of vehicles, but they don't have enough to cover all of these other vehicles. So, what we're proposing is that their vehicles, the wastewater vehicles, be funded partially out of Fund Seventy-Two and partially out of Fund Eighteen. And Eighteen is the wastewater treatment enterprise operating account, operating fund, sorry. And so, there are dollars available in their cash balance that they can use for the purchase of vehicles. And so, there's no E-RAF in this particular transaction. Public Works Field Services, these trucks, again, two pickup or dump trucks and one asphalt truck, because of their nature and because they're there to help us maintain our streets to the best that we can maintain them, these, these, these trucks are being funded out of the E-RAF, that five-hundred-and-thirty that I spoke to you about earlier. North County Fire is looking to replace one of their year-two-thousand Ford Tauruses with a Chevy Ford SUV. There is a desire from North County Fire to move their command staff out of the sedans and move them into SUVs because they're more operational efficient, they're bigger, and I think the comment I heard from one of the firemen is, you know, they barely have enough room to put their turnouts in the sedans, and so, they need that space. And so, as you, as we move to packet page ninety-five, you can see how each of the vehicles are funded, and you can see that the police vehicles are proposed to be funded from E-RAF. The Public Works Field Services vehicles also funded from E-RAF. Fund Seventy-Two will take care of the wastewater treatment vehicles, and Fund Eighteen will take care of the other half of the wastewater, wastewater treatment vehicles. And so, that's the proposal as it stands right now.
Deirdre.
So, in line with sort of what Mike was saying earlier, and I think we can talk about this, is, if we were to, so, say, we're all good with this, right? That we, we're also talking about the excess E-RAF that we've received? And would we have to reprioritize, would we have to re-agendize that discussion to say, like, well, what, what would it look like if you were to pay that fire truck off instead of taking out the loan, instead of financing it?
Yeah, we would, we would re-agendize this particular issue.
And you could come back, say, on, on a consent item if we had all sort of maybe thought about that, or had sort of discussed that, but what would that, what would, what would that leave us with putting back into the disaster accounting fund?
So, the way, the way everything is working right now, if we were to just allocate the, the remaining E-RAF dollars to the, the disaster accounting fund, that would be roughly two-point-three-six-two million dollars. And so, that two-point-four million, plus the two-forty-four that I'm estimating, would leave you with a balance of two-point-six million and some change. If we were to, now, that's scenario one. If we were to move the disaster accounting fund dollars less the five-thirty for the police vehicles and public works, then that would get us, that would contribute about one-point-eight million to the disaster accounting fund, and that would get you just shy of two million. If you were to come back and say, listen, we want to fund the fire engine out of this as well. So, the two-point-four million in the first scenario would go down to one-point-nine. The, just over two million in the second scenario goes down to one-point-five. And so, it's what council's tolerance is for what gets transferred to the disaster accounting fund.
So, in both scenarios, we'd be putting a little over a million dollars in the disaster accounting fund?
Yes.
Okay. And I very clearly remember the presentation that we received on the current state of the vehicles needing to be replaced, and like, I couldn't, like, before we got the, before the agenda had come up, I was just kind of thinking, like, well, my vehicle's, like, thirteen years old. But when I saw the state of these vehicles and how, you know, well-used and well-loved they are, I just, there was no question, really, that these vehicles need to be replaced. If you can, you can recall that the pictures were pretty telling. So, so, I'm, I'm good with this, and then I would also, you know, recommend, Lorenzo, if you thought that was a good idea, to at least give that consideration, to discuss reallocating those funds to paying off the, the engine instead of taking out, instead of financing it.
Okay.
Sue Beckmeyer.
I have a question in terms of the police vehicles. The statement was, some of the vehicles have mileage in excess of a hundred thousand. Do we know, can we know how many, and is a breakdown, like a prioritization type of thing, are they all equally, you know what I mean?
Well, you know, the good thing is, we're in luck tonight, because we have Chris Martin, who's the fleet manager, here, and we have Captain Joe Spanheimer here as well, and I'm sure between the two of those gentlemen, we could get that answer for you. Now, granted, just, we just have to be careful, because once they start talking about cars and fleets, we might have to cut them off.
Interceptors. Three minutes. Interceptors.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and members of the public. Captain Joe Spanheimer with the Pacifica Police Department. December thirty-first, I had one of my vehicle maintenance officers give me a mileage breakdown of the five SUVs that are due to be replaced. So, this is roughly a month ago. One vehicle was one-hundred-thousand, one-hundred and, I'm sorry, one-hundred-thousand-seven-hundred miles. So, by now, it's, it's up probably around one-oh-two, so add around two-thousand miles to each of these vehicles. Another one, another one was ninety-five-thousand-six-hundred, ninety-nine-thousand-sixty, eighty-two-thousand-five-hundred. Another one, the fifth one, was ninety-seven-thousand-six-hundred. So, I would say of these vehicles, probably three now are at a hundred thousand hard miles, and one is probably around eighty-five thousand right now, if that answers the question.
That does, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm not done.
Okay.
Can I go on? Or should I give someone else a turn?
You can go on.
With regard to the upcoming homeless count, I would like to throw out a concern of mine. Every time I hear about homeless issues in Pacifica, there's a, a comment made, the Resource Center will help do outreach, the Resource Center will assist with, the Resource Center will, and I'm really wondering if we should be looking at this eighty-three-thousand dollars and determining if there needs to be additional service money included in that budget. I realize it's a little out of the box, but it's, this is a windfall, and we have a human service need over here, so I have that concern. Similarly, we've been hearing a lot about trash on the beach, a lot about, should we have trash cans, should we not, what the issues are with trash cans, et cetera, and these are two-line items that this council, I don't know about this council yet, but previous councils have constantly supported. And so, I just want to put that out there as something for consideration. I don't have a motion, but I could make one quick if you need me to. Otherwise, it's a discussion item for the next time.
Excuse me, I just want to clarify, this is litter, related to litter on the beach?
Well, that's with regard to the Beach Coalition, and, because those are the two service areas that we've been funding out of E-RAF.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the camera truck, which we didn't hear about. Is that a sewer camera truck?
Yes.
Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
So...
And Deputy Director Sun will be more than happy to explain the need for that.
And we will let him.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is Louis Sun, Deputy Director for Public Works for Wastewater. Yes, the cost for the camera truck is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The current camera truck, we've been having a lot of maintenance issues, and throughout this last past year, or two thousand and eighteen, we were struggling to meet our quota from the state of CCTV sewer lines. So, this camera truck was scheduled for replacement next fiscal year, but we were going to move it up one year to, to get this replaced, so we can get back in doing our maintenance of our sewer lines.
Thank you. I have one more. So, the big items, the asphalt truck. At one of the League of Cities, we saw an asphalt truck that takes one person to drive. It does, it chops up the asphalt, lays down asphalt, rolls over the asphalt, and is a one-person truck that does everything. Seemed to me it was about that price, do you remember? About a hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Well, that all depends with or without the coffee maker, you know?
No coffee maker. About a hundred-and-fifty thousand, just something that maybe you could look into a single person, so no one has to get out of the truck. It's a single person that does everything in one step.
Well, I think Deputy Director Baptiste is probably here, he can probably elaborate on that as well.
Okay.
Let's see, we've got to have Tina and Mike come up next, right?
We shouldn't have left Tom, sorry, he left.
One by one, they came.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Sam Baptiste, Deputy Director of Public Works, Field Services. So, the type of truck that we have is something that, the one-seventy-nine-thousand-dollar truck is one that keeps our asphalt hot. So, when we go out and, and patch the potholes, we have hot asphalt and lay it down. The, the type of truck you're talking about is, is not something that we do currently, and I don't know if we, if we should go in that direction, but, but, you know, the, we're just trying to stay with what we have.
Thank you. Mary Beer.
So, I just wanted to clarify, when we're talking about possibly increasing funds to PRC and to the Pacifica Beach Coalition, I know that there was some concern from the Pacifica Resource Center, that it's, it's important for them to get the funding, and so, will that delay that process if we have another conversation?
No, 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 no. Those dollars are already appropriated in the, in the general fund budget, and so, those checks should be ready, and I ordered them last week. And so, we just have to talk with them about delivery.
Okay, great, thanks.
Deirdre Martin.
Just to address the, the couple comments on increasing funds, all for it, I would just say that we've already, we have already approved this year's budgets for eighteen-nineteen, so that's not going to happen this year. I mean, I guess it technically could, but I would, I would recommend against that at this point, not because I don't think that these organizations are deserving of it, it's because we'd like to try to stick to our budget this year. And I think that would be a really great consideration item for next year, provided we get the AERAF funds. So, these funds are not guaranteed every year, and this is the first year that we pre-allocated, you know, provided we did get them. So, I think it's a great idea, but I think that we should postpone that discussion until our budget meetings in May. Yeah.
Right.
That would be my suggestion.
So, can I get a clarification, then? The budget that we're spending out of the one that Mary asked about just now was based on an assumption of E-RAF of one-point-eight million? And we had a windfall of an additional six-hundred thousand, am I right? Am I not following that?
And so, there wasn't a particular dollar figure associated with what would be transferred to the disaster accounting fund? We just knew that, and, and what was approved was whatever remained after the eighty-three and the five, the eighty-three for PRC and the five for Beach Coalition, that amount would go into the disaster accounting fund.
I see.
It's just with this item and the prior item, I am asking for just a little bit of that, a half a million, five-hundred-and-thirty thousand of that dollar figure, which would have gone to Fund Thirty-Eight, if we could just use that for police and public works vehicles.
Okay.
And, but yeah, but this was, this was, it's essentially based on the eighteen-nineteen budget.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion if there's nobody else.
No, I just...
Mike.
Yeah. I just forgot my question was, okay, over the years that, even prior to being on council, it seemed like every time I turned on the, the TV and they were talking the budget, that we're going to hit the vehicle replacement fund. And it was, just seemed like it was manna from heaven, because it just always seemed to have money in it, all right? And I'm not against replacing any of these vehicles in regards to the vehicle that Sue mentioned, I would think, you know, have staff look at that and see if it's feasible, and, you know, depending on how much it is, maybe, you know, because we're saving personnel costs, I imagine, you know, that, that's part of the equation for looking at that. So, I would encourage staff to look and see if that would meet our needs, and is it appropriate? But I don't think it's my decision to make which kind of asphalt truck we got, that's kind of above my pay grade. In regards to the donations to the Resource Center, I have no problem donating to either of those, but the, but these figures were decided upon after we had cut the hours to the library and had some other. And I would just like to remind the people that this, the reason we have this windfall to do the vehicle replacement is because the vehicle replacement fund is being used to fund the raises to the city employees, and we now are using this money to replace that money that's being used for raises to buy police vehicles. So, if we do increase the funding to the Resource Center and the Beach Coalition, we're buying one less police car, or we buy, you know, some less public works then, okay?
Potential, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's something that we need to consider, okay? I mean, unfortunately, kind of like that, when you go to the haunted mansion in Disneyland and the room goes down, there's those alligators, I think, guy in the rope, we got a lot of alligators down there, and this rope is pretty thin. And so, I, you know, I, my main concern is the fact that if we apply for grants, we have to look like we can perform, and we can take, and, and that is a concern, given that we are still, we don't know what the rest of this winter is going to be like. And, and I, that's my concern, because I do know when I was talking to Jackie Spears' office about how you take, and I've used the, what's that called, the example of, right now, we're patching a leaky roof. This part of the wall breaks, we fix it, but basically, we need a new roof. This part of the wall breaks, we fix it, but basically, we need a new roof. And in order to get that new wall, new roof, we have to actually get into the budget of the Army Corps of Engineers. And the only way you get into that budget is if the community has the money to have the matching funds to do that. And I think we do need that sooner rather than later. And I think that's my concern about this. The vehicles, I mean, it's a capital cost. How many more vehicles are there that need replacing? Let me ask that question, do we know?
There are, there are quite a few. This is just, these are the ones that have just risen to the top. We've still, we're still holding on to vehicles that are from 1996 and '98, and probably even earlier than that.
Yeah, because I mean, like Deirdre, I remember that pictures we had, and there was a squirrel living in one of them.
Yeah, that was one of the Crown Vics, yes.
Yes, there was a squirrel living in it and everything else, and, you know?
A wildlife preserve, yeah.
I, my preference is to wait, wait and see, like, maybe the end of February, early March, and we see what the winter's like. And is this, because it was, what, four hundred, $500,000 for us to tear down those two apartment houses? I think it was two fifty, two fifty each, to tear those apartment houses done, and that down, and that's, and then we also had to pay for tearing those two houses down on Espinot, correct? And I forget how much that was, but that was over a hundred for the two houses. So that's 600,000, and that's our entire windfall.
Right.
Gone. And in addition, we have the promised raises to employees, which is well-deserved, and I have no issues with that. So I just would really like to take and think about postponing a decision like this until maybe mid-March, when the worst of the winter is over.
Okay.
And then we actually have a, you know, a handle on what might be needed.
Okay.
That's my thoughts.
Deirdre.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd just like to remind the council that we are still in the question period, we haven't opened it up to public comment yet.
Thank you.
I blew it.
That's usually my thing. So, okay, I will open this up now to public comment. There are no yellow cards on this topic. Is there anyone out there who'd like to address this subject? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for council's consideration. Deirdre.
Yeah, I, I'm all for appropriation, but I, I think I would be okay with approving, with adopting this resolution as-is this evening. But if anyone else has anything to add, I can make a motion.
Mary.
No, I would be okay with adopting the resolution as it is tonight.
Sue.
I would like to wait, or be convinced why I shouldn't like to wait. I agree with what Mike was saying about waiting to see what happens with winter, and I have concerns about what's, what our needs are going to be for human service, and I feel like we need to consider using funds that we receive in those kinds of ways as well. We didn't expect to get this extra 600. I know our vehicles need replacing, but perhaps there's a way to do most of the vehicle replacement, not quite all of it. That's all I'm proposing for consideration.
So are you saying that you'd like to amend this to put in a portion of this money, and not the other portion? Is that a possibility?
I believe that's, that's a call you all can make, yeah.
So, just so we're clear, Council Member Beckmeyer is recommending going through the list of proposed purchase vehicles and sort of tweaking that number? Is that correct? So maybe limiting the number of purchases?
I think that could probably be an efficient way to do it. We heard from the police report that we have one vehicle that has 82,000 miles on it, and there were three that were at 100,000 hard miles. So if I had to make the decision solely, I would say those three for sure, probably four, maybe there's a little wiggle room on the fifth one. But it may be that this decision can wait until later, and we could come back to reallocating some of the disaster funds. I don't know how that works, timing-wise. I'm sensitive to Council Member Martin's comments about, the budget's been set, and we don't want to change it now midstream, but I just want to put in a vote for flexibility with, when we have unexpected funds, and looking at our other needs as well. So I don't know what that means. I don't know if that means amend this proposal, or that means put that in the parking lot until a future conversation.
Comments from the other council?
Would council like me to, it sounds like there are a few thoughts. Would you like me to come back or bring this item back to you at some point, after we've prioritized these vehicles, after we've come up with perhaps another funding scenario or for the E-RAF dollars? Because we've mentioned the nonprofits, we've also mentioned financing or paying off the fire engine. So there are some questions that we have to work through, and it just seems like this particular item is just the start. Am I reading you all correctly?
Don't we usually, January is the mid-year budget, and we usually come back with a mid-year budget report to show us on track, correct?
It'll be, right now, it's second week of February.
Okay. Would, you know, because we're also looking at, we had budgeted $400,000 for marijuana revenue, which isn't really happening, correct?
I haven't checked on those revenues. I, we are, we have started receiving dollars for the short-term rentals, though.
Right, but we had budgeted some for both of those in the budget.
Right.
So that's an additional hole in our budget. And so maybe, I just kind of not making a motion, but throwing out for discussion, maybe all of this could be decided when we get the mid-year budget report, and we see where we are in our run rate on the budget that we approved this year.
I agree with that.
All right.
I think it's a good idea.
So...
I think Captain Spanheimer would like to address.
Captain Spanheimer.
Sorry, I don't want to throw any more flame here, but, or fire onto the flame, but just for consideration, the Ford Police Utility Explorers are, they're doing a new production year in 2020, and that's the order for which we'd be placing them, and numerous other police agencies are going to be doing the same thing. And these aren't just the run-of-the-mill explorers, they're specially wired, specially-built, heavy-duty components, and so there's going to be quite a run on them. And I was informed by Chris Martin, who operates Motor Pool, that, you know, it would be a several-month delay, we place the order, and then we have to wait. And the longer we do wait to place the order, you know, the longer it's going to be before they arrive and they get outfitted. Our warranties that we currently have on the police explorers expire at 100,000 miles, so several of our vehicles, if not currently, will shortly be out of warranty, and they have many, many moving parts, the new vehicles do. A water pump, which we've had to replace several, if it's out of warranty, will cost us $3,000. So it's not like a simple, you know, small-block Chevy, it, the whole front of the vehicle has to be taken apart. So the longer we do wait for these specially-built vehicles, the more money it will cost.
When is the order deadline to place the order for the 2020 run? June?
June.
Pardon?
They already have 2,200 in, they have a start for W.
They have 2,200 in.
Right, I heard that.
Chris, can you come to the mic, please, and introduce yourself?
But do they only make 2,201, or?
Oh, they already have 2,200 in order before it even started, so there will be more coming in. So the later we get in, the longer it'll take to get the vehicle.
Oh, in the queue?
In the queue.
Okay, okay, it's not like they make 2,201.
No, 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 they're going to make whatever they get, but because they stopped production for half a year to get this new vehicle going, it's going to take a little longer to get the vehicles, and then the setup time on top of that.
Okay.
As they, each vehicle runs about 3,000 miles a month.
Okay. Well, that's a new wrinkle.
And can I ask a question, then, with regard to the public works vehicles? Is that also of the same kind of lead time? What is the urgency? I mean, I know there's a lot of potholes, we know that, but what is the lead time?
The lead time is eight to 12 weeks to get the vehicle, and then still have to set it up after we get it. But it, it's when they take your order. So you could put your order in, it could take a month or two before the factory will actually pull that order, give it a VIN number, and then start production.
And that's for the police vehicles as well as public works?
Correct.
And wastewater treatment?
It's all, it all works the same way.
All of them, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mary.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify that. So after goal-setting and then the mid-year budget presentation, we'll have an opportunity to revisit perhaps increasing funding for, for like PRC or the Beach Coalition.
During, we, we do a mid-year adjustment, right now scheduled for late February. At that point in time, I will be bringing amendments to council that reflect changes in our 2018, 2019 spending plan.
Thanks.
We'll have an opportunity to revisit it at that time, then, right? And I'm okay with going forward today with these vehicles.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quit, you're, so you're saying you want to make a motion to approve these?
Well, I didn't want to be the one to hold it up. If, my concern is that we need to prioritize human services and other areas when we have funds that we don't expect. That's what, all I wanted to say, this is an opportunity for that. And if we have the opportunity to do an allocation at a later time on that same point, it doesn't have to be done tonight, I think the vehicles are super important, I understand that, I want to see us take care of that, but I don't know where the fire vehicle conversation is right now that you brought up, Mike, with the financing of the fire truck.
Well, I mean, that's pretty much, we already decided that, it's just a matter of if we want to change a previous council's decision, which I'm either yes or no, that isn't that big a deal. I mean, I trust Lorenzo to make the right decision and recommendation when he comes back to us, you know?
Right.
And stuff. I think the issue now, and you put it on the table, is do we move forward with the purchase of the vehicles or not, or do we wait for the mid-year budget review, and we see where we're standing in our run rate due to revenue issues we might be facing, so...
So it sounds like Sue Beckmeyer is interested in revisiting mid-year with the excess, with the windfall that we've received. Mike O'Neill is interested in postponing discussion because we're not sure what we're going to need disaster funds, right? I'm okay with approving as-is, and I think I heard Mary Beer say the same. So what, I don't, Mayor, how do we do?
Unfortunately, I think we all have a valid point.
Of course, everyone has a valid point.
Yeah, I think, you know...
So would someone like to make a motion?
Well, I think I heard Sue Beckmeyer make a motion to purchase these vehicles and approve the recommendation.
Just to clarify, and before, I didn't hear a formal motion, but I may have missed it. If there was a formal motion, it would need to add to the resolution language specifically approving the purchase, the purchase of 15 replacement vehicles and related vehicle preparation for a total of 1,038,000.
Which is, so item number eight, that's adopt a resolution to approve the, that's what it says.
Right, but there is no specific language in the resolution that's in the packet, so just specifying that that is indeed what council wants to do, is to approve the purchase of 15 replacement vehicles and related vehicle preparation for a total of 1,038,000.
I'll be okay, yeah. I'll second.
Everyone vote. And that passes five to zero. That concludes our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
We're adjourned.
I don't know, has anybody else ever used the gum?
Yes, John always did.
Did he?
Do you get your own gavel, sweetie?
You know?
No, I appreciate this, huh?